Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Is anybody out? Is anybody out?
Jack, come back.
Oh, man, I cracked myself up. I cracked myself up, chat. Good morning, everybody. It's time to stand up. Welcome to the overhang. Welcome to the space jam. It's your chance to dance on your space jam. All right, all right. Welcome in, guys. Welcome in, welcome in, welcome in. Good morning, good morning. Bucket Jesus, user Oran, Daddy Gaines, Azamat, Drew, Shami, Noah, AKA The Mean Master Flex, Boogie, Boogie, Charles, Justin, As Dev, Jumi Jim, JRW, Harry the Bravington one, Dontre Posse, Ricky the Saudi, Charles. Good morning, guys. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Glad to have you guys here, man. Way to show up on a Saturday. Way to put the work in. Way to outwork the competition, chat. Way to outwork the competition. Let's get it. Let's go, baby. Good morning. Stacy says she's finally catching one of these. Stacy, I'm glad to have you here. Appreciate you being here, Stace. Let's get it. Let's go. Good morning, guys. Good morning. I'm just gonna do a couple of social media posts here so everyone knows that we're live. We gotta make sure everybody knows that we're live. We're live. People need to understand. Alright, so we're going live here. Bada bing bada boom. We're gonna post it right here. We're gonna post it right here and then we're gonna go like this. Alright. Alright, alright, alright. Live now. Live now on YouTube. Okay. Post that. Boom. Free study. Free study sessions. Freestudiesessions.com. Presented by Tostitos, the chip company. Alright. Alright, that's good. Let's get that post done. Bada bing bada boom. Okay. Free study session. One more post here, chat, and we're ready to go. Alrighty. Beautiful. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. How's everyone doing this morning, man? How's everybody doing? How's everybody feeling? What's up? How Wayne? How are we, baby? Madala, welcome in, buddy. The, the VOD is always available, man. Do I trade crypto on the weekends, bro? Do I look like a D Gen? No, I don't. I don't trade. I don't trade crypto on the weekends, bro. I feel like that people that trade futures and trade crypto on the weekend, I feel like you got a little bit of a problem. Little bit of something going on there. If you feel the need to trade five days a week trading futures and then you're gonna also trade crypto on the weekend? I don't know. I think there's something going on there. For me, bro, I, five days a week trading futures is plenty for me, dude. I don't need to, I don't need to log in on the weekend and trade crypto. I don't know, man. It doesn't do it for me. What if you're just a baller? Ah, shit. I mean, listen, man. D gens will D gen, man. What am I doing today? I'm doing a little bit of everything today, brother. A little bit of everything. Oh, I'm doing a little bit of everything today. Chat, I'm, I'm honestly really disappointed in you guys, though. I don't have any likes on this stream so far, so I don't know what's going on here. Should I refresh? Are the likes busted? Oh, okay, we got 22 likes. It's busted. Okay, okay. W, 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 chat, W chat, W chat. W chat. That's my bad. My bad. My bad, my bad. Okay. How was vacation? Um, vacation was good. I'm actually going back. Dude, I'm gonna be in Miami like so many times in the next like month. It's crazy. I'm gonna Miami end of the month again, 26th. I'm gonna be in Miami again. And then I'm going back to Miami on the 6th of October for a big Alpha Futures um, event that we're doing. So it's gonna be pretty cool because we're gonna be filming a day in the life with Alpha. Meeting some of the big creators in the space. And um, and uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're putting me in a hotel for the week, so you know, you know, you know how we do it. Did I see the issue of Justin Whirlin? I did see the issue, bro. And I don't really think it's an issue. I think it's the silliest thing I've ever seen in my life. Like, I don't know what this guy's beef was with, with Whirlin taking a position like that, but do we really think that Justin Whirlin copied that kid's position? I don't. I, I mean, there's plenty of times I've taken a trade and I've seen someone else take the exact same trade, so I don't, I don't know about that one. I mean, that's just like, trade, like, everyone trades a very similar style. It had something to do with like the kid bottom ticking and top ticking and honestly, bro, I, I don't have time for it, man. I have no time for it. But honestly, I don't think Justin did anything wrong. Maybe he did. I, listen, I don't know. I just think it's such a like, I just think it's a rage bait and I think it's just for publicity. It's so silly to me. How many times have you guys taken a position and somebody else posted the exact position on social media? Like, we're really gonna sit here and be like, you can't trade the same thing? Like, he copied him? I don't know. It sounds so dumb. It sounds so silly to me. I got no time for it, bro. I'm too busy catching hundreds of points, alright? I don't care what these kids are doing. Alright. Oh, you wanna go over, you wanna go over that trade? Okay, yeah, yeah. Thursday, Thursday's trade was uh, was a, was a magical trade, bro. And that, that first cut was pro level cut, man. Not trying to toot my own horn here, but pro level cut. Pro level cut, man. Just something I noticed right away and we'll get into it right now, so let me bring up the charts. Okay, so again, guys, thank you guys so much for being here. What was the gift you got your mother-in-law? My mother-in-law? What? I'm trying to understand what that question was. My mother-in-law, I can't remember. Because Justin doesn't trade that model and rarely trades Asia Session. I'm gonna be honest with you, dude. I traded Asia Session, I think the same day that they traded Asia Session, and there was an absolute freebie gift that day, so I don't know if it was the same day. But listen, a trader's a trader. Everyone's gonna see something, you know, we're all gonna see things. That doesn't mean that somebody created the model, like, I, I don't know, man. Like, that just sounds so like ridiculous to me. I would never waste my mo, my time on social media to make a video bashing that someone took the same position I took. If anything, I'd be happy. Oh, you saw the same thing I, I took. Extra confluence, you know what I mean? So, anyway, let's get on into it. Um, alright, so I don't, I didn't release the YouTube video on this one, so I'm not gonna go too crazy into this because I still have to do a YouTube video on this video, but I, I do wanna talk about it. I mean, since we're here, I really, I mean, at this point, let's just, let's just yap about it, right? So here's what we did on Thursday, guys. I wanna show you just what a professional cut looks like. I'm gonna show you a professional cut, right? So right here, ready? Right here. Okay. So if we're looking at this market, right, on Thursday, which this is an act, this is literally a trade that we took, okay? And I'm gonna show you what we were looking at here. So the market right at the bell at 9:30, it's an absolute chop fest, right? And this is where so many traders get hurt. I don't know how many times I could tell you guys, this is where people get hurt. Like, there's nothing going on here in this range, right? And the reason is, why is there nothing going on here? Why are we not interested in this right now? I need you guys to start getting active in these chats. I need you guys to answer questions, so I know you guys are actually learning, because if you're not learning, then why am I even doing this? So why are we not interested in any of this right here? Right? Let's just talk about this. Why are we not interested in any of this? No sweep, right? There's absolutely no sweep. There's no liquidity sweep here. Yes, it's chopping, okay? But would you actually know that it's chopping if you didn't know that no liquidity has been swept? Right? Like, let, let's just, let's just, let's just understand something really quickly here. If, if you're trading this on, on Thursday, right, and you don't have the knowledge that there is no liquidity being swept, I guarantee you you're trading this right here. You're, you're doing something here, because what the problem is with most retail traders, you guys have zero patience. You have zero patience, zero discipline, and as soon as the market opens, you wanna take a trade. Okay? And right here, here's what I already know a lot of retail traders are gonna do. They're gonna classify this as the miniature sweep. Right? This is gonna be classified as the mini sweep, okay? Right? And then they're gonna say that this right here is a breaker block formation, okay? And honestly, if they are trading this little breaker block, they actually made money. Okay? They actually made money. Right? This trade went 61 points. Okay, so they actually made money. Now, the issue is, and a real trader will tell you, that there's actually nothing going on here. There's no liquidity being swept. This is seek and destroy price action at the bell. So you get seek and destroy, up, down, up, chop, right? There's really nothing going on. What we are sitting here waiting for is a sweep of liquidity. Like, give us a direction first, right? The market's giving us zero direction here. This is just what we call seek and destroy, and people are getting tagged and bagged right here pretty bad, right? So this is 10 o'clock now. Right? This is 30 minutes into the open and we watch this and we fade this. We're not interested. I'm interested in London low and or Asia low getting tagged, right? I need liquidity. I know, in my experience and many years of doing this, these are not liquidity sweeps. Nothing here is liquidity sweep. Asia high is open, London low, Asia low are still open. They've not been swept, right? Okay? So here we go. 10 o'clock in the morning now. You have to wait 30 minutes for this to play out. 30 minutes. Market sweeps both, but wait a second here. Wait a second. This is where things get very, very interesting. Okay? We are in this, not in this trade yet, but we are looking at this on Thursday at 10:08. Okay? And we're, we're looking at a potential a potential reversal from the Asia and London low. Okay? Everything looks good, right? Like, it looks pretty good. I, I'm interested to know if someone's, if anyone's gonna get this right. I might have already said it in my premium. But I'm, I'm interested if anyone knows why it's not good yet. Okay? Here it is, right here. Here's where things get sketchy. Okay? Here's where things get sketchy. So the market puts in a one-minute inverted fair value gap here and everything looks really good. Everything looks really, really good, right? You're like, ooh. Ooh, this looks good. Like, that looks really good, right? I don't even know if we had SMT at the low, too. We did. Right? Now, this is hard. This is just experienced trading and me having a lot of chart hours, right? So here, here it comes, very difficult read, and this is a pro level cut, right? SMT? SMT? But back of your head, back of your head, you gotta be thinking, is this a true liquidity sweep? Right? Here comes the SMT. Oh, this looks really good. Like, oh my God, SMT right here. One-minute inverted fair value gap. Hold on a second. Ooh. Ooh. What on earth happened here? Hold on. We have a problem. We have a serious problem. Now, now. I took this trade based on multiple, multiple factors, right? Multiple factors. The factor is that we have an SMT, we have a London low, and we have an Asia low. Put an asterisk next to the Asia low sweep. Put asterisk next to it. Okay? So I'm taking this based off of this flip here. This is really, really clean, in my opinion, because why is it clean? I'm getting everything I want and I have easy, easy targets here. I have very easy targets. Very easy targets here. So there's a lot to like. Now, in the middle of this trade, if you're not flipping timeframes, you would, you would, you didn't see this. You completely missed this and you got stopped out. I hopped onto the 30-second timeframe really quickly and after we flipped this on the one minute, I need an, I need another, I need one more explosion out of this zone, otherwise we're gonna be in trouble on the 2M. Okay? So here's what happens. The, the 30-second ends up saying, hey, PJ, you're, you're, you're wrong, brother. We need to sweep this one more time. And this is where we cut. I'm gonna show you where we entered. I'm gonna show you where we entered. Just like this. Just like this. Okay? Now, on the 30-second, they call me PJ Scissorhands. We get a 30-second inverse. No bueno, no bueno, no, no. We have an issue. We have a red alert. We have a red alert. Very big issue coming up here. I have a serious problem with that. Is everyone following along now? I have a serious problem with that. Why do I have a serious problem with this? Let's get the chat, let's get the chat paying attention here. Why do I have a serious problem with this? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yup. Yup. Yup, yup, yup. Yep. A lot of, a lot of correct answers in there, some wrong answers, but yeah. Here's what happens, guys. We get a one-minute inverse, which is fantastic, and we get an SMT at the low. Okay? But if you've heard me in the past, if you've heard me and listened to me in the past, this is not this is not enough for a sweep of liquidity. Can you guys see the, the, the wicks here of the Asia low? Let's bring the Asia low over here. Asia low is here. I don't have any body candle closures below the Asia low yet, which I wanna actually see. So I'm a little hesitant in that regard, because this is, this is where trading gets difficult. There's been times where I've seen this deliver, no problem, full delivery. Then there's times where it doesn't deliver like this day. We get an SMT, right? We, we get a sweep asterisk, and then we get a one-minute inverse, and then the two minutes starts showing us a very bad signal, and the 30-second goes inverse, right? And I'm like, alright, take a cut. We literally cut it right here. I think I took a one-point scrape. Okay? In the middle of this happening, I said, this market's gonna wanna sweep one more time. We're looking for one more sweep now. One more sweep of this low. Okay? So here's what happens. I'm looking for this to be the money sweep. Here we go. Boom. Now, wait for it. Wait for it. Okay. Okay. Now, now I'm starting to get interested. Now I have a true liquidity sweep. Now I have a true candle closure below Asia low. Okay? So this is just, this is just price action reading, man. This saves us a full stopout. Saves us a full stopout here. Okay? I wait for the money sweep and now we're looking for a possible trade. Now we're looking for a possible trade setup again. Okay? And I need to go back to look at my trade review real quick, because I'm already drawing a blank on where I took this. I don't know if it was a two-minute inverse or it was okay, so it was, it was I think it was a two-minute flip. Let me see. No, it wasn't. It was uh, 445. That means I took it here. Yeah. Okay, so here we go. One minute, right? V-shaped structure, money sweep now. Ooh, this looks good. This looks good. That's our liquidity sweep, right? Candle's closing below Asia low, V sheep, V-shaped uh, property. Now I'm waiting for an inverse. Boom. In there like swimwear. Boom. Boom. Boom, boom. Boom. That's it. That is how you need to wait for a manipulation if it doesn't feel right and something signals that something's wrong. The two-minute gives us a signal something's wrong that we're gonna sweep again. The 30-second goes inverse. We cut, we wait, we hop back, we hop back out on the one minute. Boom, there's our inverse. We mark it in real time and then we're in there like swimwear, running this trade all the way up to the good old Asia highs, the old Asia highs. That's the trade. Beautifully done, right? Respecting all fair value gaps on the way up. Right? As we're going, we're marking out our gaps so we have guidance and we can hold our trades longer. And then bada bing, bada boom. Every gap on the way up is being respected, bullish order flows intact. Okay? And then we just let the market do its thing, right? We let the market do its damn thing, man. We don't, we don't sit here and try to overanalyze things. We trust in our draws on liquidity. We mark out our gaps. At this level here, this trade went straight to break even. This trade becomes risk-free at TP1, and then we let this thing run towards the Asia highs. Boom. Beautiful trade, right? Beautiful, beautiful trade. There's your full TP right there. Okay? Now, if you guys continue to study the stuff on the channel, this is the same shit that happens every day. It's the same stuff. It's the same stuff. This, this is the property right here that you're looking for. Engrave this in your brain. It will set you free. Literally, it's, it's that easy. You gotta just, you gotta be able to identify the manipulation. And I was quick enough to say, hey, this is actually not the sweep. This is not enough. One more. Boom. Inverse. Go. Okay? So once we got that money sweep and then we got the V shape, now we're like, we have enough orders, enough liquidity to run this thing up to the Asia highs. So great, great Thursday trade, man. Great Thursday trade. Great Thursday trade. This trade ends up putting us at 181 points on the week, okay? And then there was another trade setup that we took. Uh, we'll go back to September 2nd real quick. We'll go back to September 2nd. Uh, we caught another banger on September 2nd, which was 132 points, I believe. Yeah, we were just catching banger out there, banger this week. September is here, chat. If you're not in the premium group catching bangers with us, I don't know what you're doing anymore, honestly. Number one futures discord in the world for a reason. Here we go. Clean, very clean, very clean. Look at this one. So this one is a good old continuation. The good old continuation model. So easy, my grandma can trade it. Here we go. Five-minute inverse. Ooh. Starting to get interested, right? Five-minute inverse. 15-minute inverse. Ooh, at the same time? Two-for-one combo? Okay? So what do we have here, chat? What do we have here right now? Somebody answer this question right now. What do we have? What do we have? What is this? Uh-huh. Yup. 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 What do we have, chat? We have a trending bearish market on the 15-minute, right? We have a trending bearish market on the 15-minute timeframe. Okay? We have a trending bearish market on the 15-minute, on the one-hour timeframe. Okay? And even on the four-hour timeframe, we have a bearish trending market right now. Ooh, what are great setups in trending markets, chat? What are great setups in trending markets? What's our favorite trending model? What's the easiest way to trade this? What is the easiest way to trade this? Continuations, bro. Continuations, okay? Trending market, dead cat bounce, right? Dead cat bounce. Bounce, failure, change in the state. Right? Now, it's not that we're just taking blind trades here. We have a lot of things going on here, okay? Dead cat bounce. Change in the state. Delivering out of a bearish 15-minute fair value gap. Oh, wait a second. This is getting good. 15-minute, okay? Respecting all of our bearish order flows, and you're probably thinking, well, what about this one, Paul? What about this one, Paul? Why is this one not relevant? Why am I not looking for longs here, chat? Why am I not looking for longs? Somebody answer the question. It's so easy. Answer the question. Well, Paul, what about this 15-minute inverse? Why am I not looking to take longs here? Why? 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 Why am I not looking? Ah. JRW. JRW is the first person to get this one correct. Shout out JRW in the chat. Shout out JRW in the chat. This is a baloney 15-minute fair value gap. It doesn't mean anything to me. It's not the strongest gap on the leg. Okay? If you guys have been paying attention here, the 15-minute first presented. Okay? Now, understand something very important. It can really change your careers if you understand it. Bearish order flow, right? Breakout leg, okay? This is a breakout. The breakout gap, okay? This 15-minute fair value gap first presented holds more weight than this one. Okay? Market comes back up into here, respects consequent encroachment of the first presented and rejects beautifully. Right? Dude, guys, if you're not paying attention to this, bro, I'm really giving you models that will literally change your life, like, I, I'm, I'm not even sure why I'm doing this for free, but it's what I do. 15-minute first presented for a value gap. Okay, wow. Fantastic. Change in the state of delivery on the 15-minute now. Change in the state of delivery on uh, CSD on the five. Change in the state of delivery on the one. Holy crap. I've changed in the states of the delivery everywhere I look. Okay? Now, what am I looking for after a change in the state to really get extra confluence? Five-minute, five-minute inverse. Boom. Five-minute inverse, 15-minute inverse. Boom. Double confluence, 15-minute inverse is two inverses here, okay? How am I trading this, PJ? What am I doing? How do I trade this? Bada bing. Bada boom. Change in the state of delivery, fif, first 15-minute for a value gap presented, gets rejected, CISD. Five-minute inverse, 15-minute inverse, okay? Market puts in a sell-side imbalance, buy-side inefficiency. We top back into that and at the same time, chat, we fill the five and the 15-minute. It doesn't get any more textbook than this. It doesn't get any more cleaner. Everything is balanced that I need it to balance, okay? And we're taking shorts from here on, on the retest of the five-minute CIBI, the five-minute inverse, and the five-minute, 15-minute inverse. It's literally A+, A+, A+ continuation model down to the hourly lows for 133 points. That's the trade that we took on um, the second. Uh, which day is the second, by the way? Tuesday, Tuesday. Crazy, crazy, crazy week, man. It's only literally the first week of September, bro, so. A+, 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 first presented, CISD. Multiple inversions to trade out of, back into it, fills it on the wick, and we're in there like swimwear. Very, very saucy. Very saucy. We love sauce. Jackson, I'm gonna give you a piece of advice that maybe nobody's gonna tell you, Jackson. Don't worry about SMTs. You're gonna confuse yourself as a new trader. SMTs are gonna give you extreme confusion if you don't know what SMT is good and which one's not. Okay? You're not gonna, you, you, it's just not worth your mental capital in the beginning. You're asking questions that really are gonna confuse you more often than not. Right? I see new traders all the time coming to my Discord and they're calling out one-minute and 30-second SMTs, and I'm like, guys, those are not going to be valid. You need to know what a valid You need to know what a valid SMT is going to be and when it's going to present itself. So just, I'm telling you right now, stop trying to trade SMTs. You're not, it's just going to hurt you. Look for the inverted for vag app models. It's the, you don't need an SMT. You don't even need them. It's an added confluence for an advanced trader, right? I can walk through this. And I know when I'm going to need it, when I'm not going to need it, but for someone who's new, you're just going to get confused. You're just going to get confused. The juice is temporary, the sauce is forever. Okay, guys, listen, I'm going to do something very rare on today's session. I'm going to allow you guys to come up on a Q and A call with me. Okay? Um, if you guys want to come up on a Q and A call with me, all you gotta do is hop into the free Discord. Uh, and let me know who wants to chat. Go to the trading chat. And say, I want to come on with you PJ or I want to be a guest. Okay? Go on to the free, um, I'll put a link to it right here. Okay, I'm going to bring you guys. No, I don't want to open that up. I don't want to open that up. That'll, you guys. All right? I'm going to do, I'm going to get you guys in on a Discord call, all right? Whoever wants to come in on the Discord call will do a live Q and A. I don't like doing it, um. I'll, I don't like doing it uh, like on the, on the chat because there's a delay. I like to get people on here and talk to them. So let's get people in the free Discord. I'm going to put the link in here. You guys could join the free Discord, hop into the free chat. I'll bring you on a call. Okay, no, that's the premium. Why did that post there? Don't join that one. I need my free, my free access channel, dude. Where's my free access channel? Come on, bro. Okay, dude. Oh, no, no, that is the free one. That should be the free one. No, 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 no gains. Delete that, 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 delete that. We don't want people going through that. We, it has to go through WAP to get into the free. Otherwise it's a, it's a madhouse. Don't do that. You gotta give him the free link. Okay, guys, this is the free link right here. I'm going to uh, I'm going to pin this real quickly and you guys can hop in and we'll get you guys on a Q and A session, right? This is a great opportunity to hop on with, with me and ask me questions, man. Seriously, take advantage of this stuff. No one else is doing this. All right, let's talk about discipline. Lama, do you want to come on? I have a question for live. I want to come on PJ. Okay, hold on. We got a lot of people coming in here. All right, I'm going to bring Lama on, guys. Lama is a premium member. He's our, our meme lord. Uh, this guy is, has done a lot in his, in his career since he's joined the um. Since he's joined my, my community, so I think he'll have some really good questions. We'll bring him on first and we'll go through the people that are on the list. Let's bring him on. Lama, I'm in your, uh, I'm in your DMs. DMs, answer the call. Lama. Yo. I don't hear your mic yet. Hold on, we're working on it, chat. We're working on it. AirPods, okay, no problem. All right, guys, so while he's getting that set up. I have a question. Some sec, we up to the top step live brokerage account feeling nervous. Why, man? Why? Why are you feeling nervous? You obviously got to a very, very elite point in your career. Why are you nervous about it? I think you're going to crush it, dude. You're, I think you're going to crush it. My whole thing is you can't be nervous in trading, bro. You can't be nervous. Okay, Lama's got to fix some issues. Let's bring somebody else on. Okay, Lama, get on live, ask him in the chat. I have a question for live. All right, let's get Jake going in here. Let's get Jake going in here. Jake, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I can't send you a message because your privacy settings, I think. I'm going to try to call you right now. Answer that call, Jake. All right, should we just go into the free stage and bring people up? Let's just go into the free stage real quick. Guys, I'm going to start a free stage. Just join into the free stage, all right? I'm going to join to the free stage. I'll bring people onto the stage. It's the easiest way to do this. Live Q and A. Ready? We're on YouTube. Yeah, I'm going to do free stage over on the Discord. All right, here we go. Can you guys hear me? All right, so join the free stage, everybody. You guys can hear me on YouTube still? Okay, cool. All right, so who wants to come up the, on the free stage real quick? I'll bring you up to the stage. Where was that guy uh, that wanted to chat Jake? Join free stage. I'll come on? Okay, cool. Oh, let me get Lama back in here. Lama, how do I bring people on stage, dude? I'm like such a new. Gaines, is there a way to bring him on stage? KWT, can you bring Lama on?
Okay, I'll bring him now.
Thank you.
Yo, yo.
There he is.
There it is.
What's up, Mr. Noah?
How you doing, Unc?
I'm good, brother. I'm good.
Um, so, I mean, trading aside, I know the, the models and understanding what you gotta look for. That's the easy part.
Yeah.
Undeniably.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. I think the discipline outside of the charts and what you can do, even though you don't want to do it, like if you want to go. You know, you want to better your discipline on the charts, well, do something you don't want to do outside of that. Get up, go for a run, do some shit, dude, like be active, better yourself all around. And I think it directly transfers to the charts because if, if you're willing to, you know. Sit there all day, do something you don't want to do, crawl, like pull your eyes out. And wait for that opportunity that's going to be gold, then spot on right there. But I want to ask you, what are some of the things that you do like, you know, after the market or after you're done trading besides the gym? And on the weekends, like what really helps you re-ground yourself? I know Gaines is really into like going outside, touching grass, literally.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, so for me. Like, I don't, I honestly, it's a, it's a great question because I feel like I, the stuff that I do in my, my day to day life is just. It, it's not that like, like I don't have like this crazy routine. I don't like get up at three in the morning and like wash my face with like water, like that guy on, on Instagram. Yeah, like. I don't do any of these crazy things. Um, I'm just very structured in my day to day life. Like it's the same thing every single day. You know, it's like robotic and it's kind of boring like. And when I say it's like, it's just like, listen, I get up at the same amount, the same time in the morning. You know, I, I drink a bunch of water to hydrate my body. Um, you know, and then I pretty much get into my breakfast and then I get into the charts. Like I don't have some crazy routine in the morning. It's just very, very basic. It's stuff I've been doing for years.
How detrimental is it when you slip up on something like that for your day?
Like it, well, it, it's a little bit different now. It's like, it's more detrimental the night before. Like if I'm like the night before doing something that I know that's going to affect my morning routine, that's when it's detrimental. So I don't really make those mistakes anymore. You know, I'm not going to really show up to the chart like hungover and like, you know, try to trade like it's never going to work. My mind is just not going to be as sharp as it needs to be. But outside things, man, that really, really helped me. Uh, I'm a big gym person. I've always, I've always been a gym person. You gotta go to the gym. Uh, I've been going to the gym my entire life. I go five days a week usually. You should take off Sundays, five, six days a week. Um, you know, I'm, I, I'm very, very disciplined with that. I'm always doing cardio. I'm sitting in the sauna. You know, it, it's just, I like to get my body moving, so I do a lot of like different cardio stuff. Me and my wife take walks a lot and just talk about things. So it's just a very, very like basic, like weekly life, like nothing crazy, really. I don't have any like crazy like gift to tell people like, hey, this is what like my, you know. My uh, you know, special sauces. It's nothing really crazy, man. It's just, I think where my, my special ability comes in, I've been doing this for so long and I've been watching the charts for so long. So I'm very just used to the charts. It's like, almost like second nature for me. Um. But I tell people all the time, man, your routine is going to really make or break you. If you have no routine, you show up to the charts with, you know, just. No energy, bad sleep. You know, no food in your body or like you're, you know, whatever it may be, like you're going to make mistakes. So it's, I just have a very, very disciplined robotic approach to, to, to daily life and I think it reflects onto the charts. Um, but people think that they're just going to be able to show up and click a button and make money. It's, it's the farthest thing from the truth. Like you gotta put a lot of work in. On yourself. I mean, there is times in my career, if we're being real. That, you know, I, I did not take the proper steps to be a day trader. I was doing all the dumb stuff, you know, I'm going out, getting drinking, hungover. Uh, you know, not studying, not back testing, not journaling. Just doing all the things I know were never going to make me profitable. And that's where I try to tell people like early in your career, hey. You gotta make those changes now. Otherwise, it's, otherwise you're going to be wasting a lot of time. Right?
Honestly, I've been, I've been at this for like five years and the, since I've joined the Discord, when, once you, like when, I, whenever you launched it. It was one of the first one hundred.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that.
With all of, you know, the game and the info and everything, dude, like you just slowly mold yourself into being a better person and a better trader. Like, you know, disciplinary wise.
Yeah.
And dude, the performance that has, like I've gained from that is, it's ridiculous, dude.
What, what have you done? Why don't you tell people what you've done so far since you've, since you've joined? What, what have you implemented in your day to day?
Like, like routine wise or?
Yeah, routine wise, routine wise, what routine wise, huh?
So, I don't know, I used to, I'd probably get up around like eight back in the day. Now I'm waking up around like five, five fifteen ish. Even if I'm not doing much, I'm having time for myself.
Yeah.
I try to make sure all my ducks are in a row before I do anything. I mean, because ultimately speaking, if you have something harping you in the back of your head, like shit, I gotta do this. I didn't care that or that, like, that's gonna, that's gonna mess with you.
That's, it's a really good point, yeah.
Regardless if it's something stupid, like if you're not on your hundred percent game, then you know, maybe don't take that trade that day, you know? And everything, it's like being a pitcher, like being a sports player, like if, if you got a pool, like you feel a pool in your hamstring or something like that, then. You're only going to do yourself worse in your career. So why, why push the buttons when the charts are going to be there tomorrow, the day after, forever? And you know, the model is always going to work, but you don't want to deploy capital unless your brain and your body and everything's feeling completely in line.
Yeah, no, that's the, that's the hundred percent the truth. Um.
I think a lot of people see, you know, candles on a chart and they see it going one direction. They're like shit, like regardless of how I feel, I gotta make this money.
Yep.
And, you know, when their mind might be in a different position than it should be, and then that just implements, you know. Bad, bad uh, behavior or, you know, building bad habits.
Yep, no, when you're uh, when your mind is decoupled, I like to say with your body, when your mind is decoupled with everything that you got going on in your life. You're going to be decoupled on the market too. You're not going to, you're not going to be in flow with it. So you gotta have like outside factors, kind of be like. Everything has to kind of be in order in your outside life in order to be in flow with the market. Like let's say you got into like an argument with like your girlfriend or something and that argument's still lingering in the back of your head. You're going to be a little bit off and that's just the truth because it's, this is the only industry in business where if you're not operating at like the utmost capacity. At the highest level, you're going to make mistakes. You're going to miss something like. Let's just say that I was just like really just coming into the market. Um, you know, this week and I was just not prepared at all. Like I would have, like where's that trade that we, we like? Like that, that cut that we had, we had, right?
Yeah, if you weren't completely present right there, that would have been something that, that burned you.
Like let's just say that, yeah, yeah, it could have burned me, right? This could have literally burned me. I could have got, I could have got taken for a full stop here. But I was aware, I was, you know, I'm looking for certain factors within the market during that time. In my, you're present, you have to be, you have to be a hundred percent present. So a lot of people just get onto the market and they click a button and then they're like, oh, and they just let this happen. And I don't understand that part of it. It's like you need to protect your capital. You gotta, capital preservation is our number one job, right? And I'm not going to let this go full stop. There's something wrong here immediately. You know what I mean? And there's some traders out there that are going to let this thing go full stop. I just don't understand that. It's like, if you see something wrong. Why am I letting this go full stop here? You know?
Why let it cut deeper than it has to?
Like why, why am I letting that cut? So, you know, we're, there's, there's got to be reactionary trading. And reactionary trading requires a, a level of mental, of mental capacity that. A lot of people don't have when they just start trading. That, that takes development and time.
And I think another thing is you gotta be able to take that L, like you gotta be able to get smacked in the face and still want to fight, you know? Like, and it can't change your, your mentality, like. You know, you take that L and you can't let it cook your mental.
Yep.
You obliged by your model, that model works all the time, you know, it, it didn't work in that situation or whatever the, you know. You can't let it, you can't let it throw you off because that's exactly what's going to make you the money, that model.
You can't, you can't just like, and that's another thing, people like, they might take a loss on like, like for example, this week we took a loss on Wednesday. And it's like, oh, the, my, my career's over, like I'm done, like the model doesn't work. I'm going to get a new model, like, oh my God, it doesn't work. And then the next day you run a hundred and twenty something point trade. It's like.
You print.
Like it, it, people don't understand, like the model's going to lose, like you're going to lose. This is part of trading, right? You're going to lose.
Anybody anything.
Huh, like, no. So.
You know, like, but, yeah, I don't want to hold you too long. I just really wanted to uh.
No.
The uh, the discipline because that shit's, I think that's way more important than the models in itself.
Oh yeah, absolutely, man. Well, thank you for coming on, bro. We have a lot of people in here. We'll get, we'll get some more people going.
Of course, brother.
Thank you, bro. I'll see you. Let's get this guy Jake. I know he wanted to come on. Move to. How do I get this, how do I get people on here, bro?
Hello?
Oh, there he is. What's up Jake?
Oh, hold on, let me put this on speaker.
Jake from State Farm.
All right, hello? What's up PJ?
Hey, man, what's going on?
Uh. So I have two questions. Is that cool?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, bro.
So the first one is about the trade that you just went over. I think it was Tuesday, the fourth, I believe. Or this, I don't know. It was the Tuesday of this last week.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you want me to go back to it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the continuation model? Yeah.
Yeah, so my model basically is I look for a manipulation like, like a juda swing. And then a, a, a move after that, like a real move. And I'm trying to get like more involved on the continuation model. So after the five minute and the fifteen minute inversion, do you have to wait for that retest to, to have your entry? Or is that just?
That re.
Is that just baseline?
That retest is um, is really, really important because it's going to, it's going to provide basically the best risk to reward opportunity for you. And you really want to see both of those get filled because now you're balanced on, in that, in that range there. So when you create an inversion, uh, you create basically an imbalance in the market because of, because of the speed to the downside. So sellers are presented there and buyers don't have an opportunity to balance it. So that right there is just what you want to see happen. You want to fill all the unmitigated gaps real quick that need to get tapped and balanced. And then the rejection is our, is our, literally our clue that, hey, that's really clean. We're going to take this trade from here. So I love to see that because that means we're, you know, we're ready to really run again to the downside.
Right, it's like extra confirmation basically.
It's extra confirmation, um, and honestly, it's going to give you the best risk reward. You could, you could straight up take a five minute inverse because if you took a five minute inverse, you could have just done it like this. Uh, and your stop would have been, you know, a little bit wider. You have, you have to run. Uh, and your stop would have been, you know, a little bit wider. You had, you have to run it into this, you have to run it into this sell side and balance that, give it room.
Okay.
So it just depends, man. I just like having a, a tighter stop and a better RR. I'm always about getting in cheap. And this trade was just cheap and it's exactly what I'm looking for.
Right. Okay. I appreciate it. Uh, and my next question is, so I'm funded on two accounts on top step right now in two 50Ks. I, I'm pretty close to getting a payout on one. Do you recommend having, uh, like that buffer zone, like build up a buffer and then withdraw like a little bit of the buffer? So you still have that buffer zone through your drawdown or just take the payout full?
It's, it's a tough question because it depends how many payouts you've gotten in your career. Have you ever got paid before?
No, I'm still within, I'm like eight months into my trading journey still.
I, I, I always tell people to realize, realize the profits, like take, take money and pay yourself because if you're eight months in, you never actually realized any of the profits before, it's not gonna feel real until it does.
Right.
You know, I also tell people the more that you try to build a buffer, the more opportunities that you're gonna lose the accounts as well. You're gonna do something stupid. They want you to build the buff, they do want you to build buffers, but I would start building buffers when you're a little bit more advanced and you've actually paid yourself back. So if you have a payout opportunity, I would get to the payout opportunity, maybe take a little bit just to realize it and then start working on, on the buffer again. But I would, I would, at some point you gotta pay yourself. You gotta do something to realize those, that, that profit and make this real. Otherwise it's just numbers on the screen.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, I appreciate you PJ.
Alright Jake, good luck with everything, man. Keep us updated.
Thank you.
Alright, who do we got next Gaines? Guys, we also do have our, our in-house book map specialist Gaines here. If you guys wanna, if we, if you do want a little bit of Q and A with Gaines today, we could do it a little bit later after our Q and A for a couple, a couple of people that wanna ask book map questions.
Hey.
Hey brother, who do we got here?
Hey, um, I remember the last time we had a conversation, you remember we, I was in drawdown with 250K, uh, live with top step. And, um, now I'm back actually, I'm above like 30, 30 right now and I'm feeling kinda nervous, um, moving into the live brokerage, um, account and moving in with 30,000 in buffer. And the last time we had a conversation, I, I never thought I would make it this far.
That's awesome Ghost, congratulations first of all.
Appreciate it. Yeah, appreciate it. Is, I would have done it without you and Gaines and, um, implement these new models. Cause you know, the last time we spoke, we talked about ratio and risk management. I didn't need to work on those things and, but it was just the models I was working, the 2022 model. You only could take those trades a couple of days.
Yeah, a handful of times, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I mean, like it feels like moving to brokerage, brokerage account feels like it's gonna be a lot more pressure on me because a lot more people is gonna be watching me. That's above me, like, what do I do in this situation? Do I stay comfortable where I'm at?
Yeah, yeah, you don't do, I mean, you could do that. Go ahead, finish up what you're gonna say and I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, do I take everything where I got? Continue just doing expresses or sabotage, like, you know, sabotage myself not going to a brokerage account or, or continue actually move up to the next level? Because I already have multiple payouts behind me. We had a last conversation. I already pulled out more than eight payouts already. I implemented the new model, the IF, IFVG. I, 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 I really didn't understand IFVG until you bring up these, these crazy, you know, uh, entries and stuff like that. And it motivated me more, you know what I mean?
IFVG models literally broke. It needs to be nerfed.
It's for real. Um, yeah. And what do I do in this situation? Because I, I never thought I would make it this far in a trading. You know, this is my first 10, 10K week.
That's great, brother. That's great, man.
That's, yeah, and.
So are you asking me, are you asking me what you should do if, when, as far as going to live with top step, if you should actually take the withdrawal out fully and just move it to your own live account? Or are you asking me, what are you asking me specifically?
I'm asking you, do I move into, yeah, do I move into the brokerage account sap, or sabotage my, will back myself out and be comfortable where I'm at, playing with five, five accounts and trading with top sub?
Alright, but what about the live account though? Are you asking me about?
Yeah, yeah. Should I move, well, I'm getting moved up to the brokerage account right now as we speak and do, or should I just keep the 250K I'm funded with and just keep on rinsing?
I, I mean, this is a tough one for me because I'm a big fan of rinsing. I hate, I hate moving, uh, I hate moving money to live with prop firms because the tax benefits make zero sense for the trader. So you're literally gonna get still taxed as a, as a 1099 or W2. When in, if you move that money to your own personal brokerage, you can do a short terms, you know, short term, short term, long term capital gains benefit there. So I, that's why no one likes going live, um, with, with firms, because you're literally getting slapped. You know, you're getting slapped pretty hard. So, um, if that really is gonna be up to you, uh, how you wanna do that? You know, but I mean, you got this far, maybe like trade it for a while. I mean, what, how much money are you moving into a 30K?
30K and probably, I'm not even done with this month. This is the first, first week of this month.
Yeah.
So that's above, yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, two, I'm at 250K live right now and when I was in drawdown last month, I kinda made some messy trades of myself, but I recovered all that, you know? That's what I really question myself. Am I good enough? Am I good enough? You know, that inner child in you when you trade is like, am I good enough to be with the bigger boys? Because.
I mean dude, nothing's changing though. Nothing's changing. Like you're just mentally putting that, you're putting that stuff in there because of like the lore of going to a live account and people posting all that stuff on social media. Nothing should be changing in your mind mentally. It should be the same thing through and through. It's the same stuff that you've been doing to how you got there in the first place. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't even start putting your, you know, your head into all this stuff and really starting to get into like the hype of live accounts and who's watching you and the leaderboards and stuff. Just trade the same way, man. Trade exactly the same way as how you got here and you'll probably be surprised, you know, where you can go with that. So never change your attitude or your mindset.
Yeah, I never traded for clout. That's on my own social media. I personally tweeted it out. I got no, you know, viewers or anything, but I just do it for me, for the journey itself, because coming from where I'm from, it's really low prob, trading wasn't the idea of life. Like I'm actually trying to do it for real.
I don't think, I don't think it's anybody's ideal. I don't think it's any ideal, uh, person's idea, like they're gonna start trading. I mean, I didn't think I would be a trader and here I am 10 years later. So.
Right.
Bro, I would just keep being consistent, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, eventually if like, you know, you're really, really crushing it, but like the, the tax stuff is starting to get a little bit too, too crazy. I'd probably move my money out of there at some point. And you know, a lot of people drain those accounts and move them to lives, like their own lives. So.
Yeah, I'm already above 30 days above, you know, what the criteria is needed. It's just like hiccuped me like, dude, is it really gonna benefit me? I'm already at a job already and plus with this extra funds, I don't wanna be in a messy situation with coming to taxes.
Yeah, you definitely don't wanna be in that, brother. Trust me. I've been there, I've been there, I've been there, done that. That's why I kind of, a lot of people kinda keep this whole thing on the low and I can't really give you obviously tax advice, but.
When do you think is the right time to actually open your own? I haven't opened my LLC yet because I don't know if I was, I'm actually.
Well, well, I mean, if you're making money and you're doing business with trading and that's your trading business, I would open up an LLC because you can start writing stuff off.
Right, yeah.
You know, if you're, if you're making good money and you know, again, evaluations are also write offs too. So people that don't know that, but if you're, if you're failing a lot of evals, I mean, obviously you have to make money too for that to actually, you know, go against it. But yeah, those are write offs as well.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Alright Ghost, well, good, good luck, brother. Good luck with everything, man. We're excited for you.
Thank you.
Alright buddy, peace out.
Alright, peace.
Wow, that's crazy chat. Ghost is, uh, I remember him talking about that and now he's, you know, he's, he's at a really good spot and he's moving, getting moved up to live. I mean, these are premium members that are coming in here and telling us this. So if you're a free member on the fence, I don't really know what else it takes for you guys to join. I'm not even trying to sell the premium today. I just do this for you guys, but we have a lot of successful people in this group. I mean, we, it's just crazy to see some, I mean, we got a guy literally doing 30K payouts, 40K payouts, 50K payouts. So it's pretty crazy. Hey Sitto, if you ask, I have a question one more time, I'll just ignore you for the amount of times you've asked me, I have a question. So that's one, two, three, okay, so we're, we're, we're gonna ignore you. Who wants to come on next? There we go. What's up Viper?
Hey PJ. Sorry, I'm at work right now. Let me get to a safer spot where I'm not that loud.
Nah, you're good, bro.
Alright, so I've been coming up on a year of trading so far. Well, actually I am past a year trading. And I just wanted to know, I think I'm starting to get to the point where everything's super clear to me, you know, when it comes to like markets, but I have a, like, I still have a struggle with my mindset, you know, I'm still, I'm still scared of just that one day right over till, you know what I mean? You know, how, how do you get like, how do you get over those days where, where you feel like, man, I don't know how to explain this, you know what I mean? It's like, there's always that one day that could just completely erase all your progress, right? And that, that day kinda scares me all the time in the markets. Is there, is there a way to overcome that?
What do you, well, well.
What kinda helped you with that? If, if that was ever something you struggled with?
Well, I mean, you, one day should not be ruining your trading business. That's, that's, that's the number one thing. So the risk needs, the risk, your risk needs to be in check because not, never should one day be ruining your, your, your trading business. And if that's the case, and that's in the back of your mind, there's something else going on there, you know, on, on your end. So like, are you, are you properly risking on these funded accounts? Are you on fun, are you on eval? Where are you at?
I'm, the only payout I've ever gotten was in March. Um, and I could tell just from that period of time where I wasn't putting so much effort into trading, like this whole year, I could not stop thinking about trading, like trading was on my mind 24/7. I think that's really what put me in a hole. In terms of like where, where my progress is going, you know what I mean? And so because I was thinking about trading so much, when I got to that period of time, I was in school at that time and I, trading was, wasn't like my first priority. It was, if anything, was like my second priority. I mean, I'd hop on the charts for maybe 30 minutes during in between classes and I was winning trades and that's how I got my payout. After that though, it just, I got that payout and then my mindset just went to shit. I didn't get a payout anytime after that. And now I've been stuck on evals ever since. So. So yeah, I'm on, I'm on evals now. I'm, I'm, I'm hopefully starting to get to that point of profitability. I've been noticing, um, my trades have been very well risked, especially recently. I think summer price actions will also put me into this hole. It's my fault because I wasn't, you know, managing my risk properly, but, but yeah, um, hopefully I'm getting to that point.
A lot of people, yeah, so let me, let me just stop you. A lot of people get into a cycle after their first payout and they never see another one again. The issue is they don't know how they got to their first payout in the first place. If I asked you to go through the steps on how you even got there, on your models, on your checklist, could you tell me that with a hundred percent confidence? So why are you not doing the same exact thing that got you there in the first place? What, where is, where is the disconnect? There's a, there's a chink in the armor somewhere, but I can't figure out what it is just yet. You're not telling me. Is it the risk? Is it the overexposure? Is it, are you saying it's the price action?
Actually, it could be the overexpo, probably the price action. Cause like I said, there was a lot of days, especially during the summer where I shouldn't have traded and I did anyways.
Well, there you go. You have to be able to identify low probability and higher probability trading conditions. This summer price action has not been easy. You know, it's been difficult and it takes a, it really takes a pro to navigate that. So if, if things are, don't look good on your end and you say you had a job, correct?
Yes.
Well, that's good because having a job and you're not being a full-time trader yet, you need to keep your mind, you know, you need to keep your mind kind of like, that money needs to keep coming in at, at your job. Because if you're relying on trading, right? And you don't have anything like to go back on, you're gonna start rushing the process. That's where people mess up this whole thing. Because they think every day I gotta get on the charts and click the button and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make money. I'm gonna be one step closer to payout. No, you need to actually some days not click the button. And then the next day, that button click is gonna turn into 200 points. All of a sudden, boom, you're funded on 10 accounts or you hit payout on one trade. So there is a very, there's a tough, nobody goes from being a beginner trader to a fully advanced profitable consistent trader. There's gonna be that in-between gap. That's the struggle gap. That's where 95% of traders fail. That, that, that's where everyone fails, right? So right now you're in that middle. You gotta payout. And now you're trying to figure out how to get back to payout, right? What you need to do is you need to slow down the entire process because you're trying to rush back to payout. You need to slow down the process and need to wait for your conditions, your model, your checklist, and your risk has to stay, you know, in check. Once you get to funded, you can't overexpose, you can't try to chase the light at the end of the tunnel, you know? You have to, you have to really focus on the process because right now it seems to me like you're trying to focus on when's that next payout coming? And if you get into that spiral cycle, you'll never get to a payout.
Okay. I appreciate it PJ. You're amazing. I've been following you for like six months. You helped me a lot during that whole time, just with, with everything going on and, um, and I actually read one of the books you recommended. It was, um,
Best Loser?
What was it? Best Loser Race? Oh my God, such a good book so far.
It's a really good book, bro. You should really study that book because you have to become the best loser, man. You have to. This business, you're gonna lose. It's a game of probabilities.
Appreciate it.
Alright.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Bye, bro. Alright, who we got? Guys, that book is really good, man. Really, really, really read that book. If you guys don't know how to take losses, you gotta read that book.
Hey PJ, how you doing?
Hey brother, who we got here? What's your name?
Gabriel.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hey, nice to meet you, man.
Nice to meet you, man. I, I'll make this quick. I just have a few questions regarding time. I hear a lot about macros and the power of three, like the four, four hour candle. And I just wanna know, do those play a big role in your trading or what are your thoughts on those?
The power of three is, is something that I look for for sure. Power, power three also is, um, just AMD, basically accumulation, manipulation, distribution. And a good example on, on macros is if you've noticed and you've been studying a lot of these setups, the distribution phase of that AMD or power of three usually comes during the macro. So if you could position a setup close to the macro or within that timeframe, usually will have a pretty quick trade. So yes, we do look for at PO3, we do look for AMD and we do trade macros. But it's not like a, it needs to be inside the macro is, if that's what you're asking me, like it could be outside of it too. Like it doesn't have to be right in between like the 1050 and 1110. It could be, you know, a different timeframe as well, a different time.
Okay, I see.
Like you see this one right here, this one, the continuation model, this is like a perfect example of right inside the macro. And then it's the other delivery comes during the macro. Well, like right as the macro starts delivering and then we have a delivery, a full delivery like almost at 1154. So a lot of the times if you could position yourself within that macro, that's where you're gonna see the quickest distribution towards your target, if you're correct.
Okay, but it's not something you need personally in your trading?
I'm not looking, no, I'm not looking for it specifically. It doesn't have to be inside of a macro. We've taken plenty of trades outside of macro that still make money. So.
Okay. And as far as market open, uh, obviously you know, it could be a little, um, chaotic. You wait a certain amount of time before you look to enter a trade or?
First 15 minutes. Yeah, first 15 minutes for sure. That first 15 minute candle is literally gonna get you manipulated half the time. So usually the first 15 minutes is what we wait for. And then let's say it's like, let's say it's like nine 45, right? But then we have news at 10 AM. We're probably then waiting for, we're, we're then waiting for 10 AM news to come out too. So that all depends on, on the economic schedule as well. So, so that's, yeah, that's, that's, that first 15 minutes, bro, I would fade it. I mean, it's usually very dangerous. Sometimes it's very obvious what it's gonna do, but at some point in time it'll come back and manipulate you and, and, and take your stop. So I just avoid it completely and then wait for a cleaner setup.
Yeah, I think that's been my, my biggest struggle just because there is a lot of volatility. So it does seem like you're missing the move. But I just find myself getting chopped out way too often, trading that first 15 minutes.
I always tell people to back test it for themselves, but there's a reason why I don't do it. It's because you might find one great setup for, you know, right at that open that like works one day, but then the next time you try to come back, you're gonna get torched. Like it's gonna happen. Like at some point, so. Like at some point, so I just fade it altogether. And then I let the market find direction and then look for a trade setup from there. A lot of my trades come, I would say, like I, I think our favorite macro or is the 1050. Like I think we get a lot of really good setups at 1050.
And do you always look for like a session liquidity to be read or a previous day high or low?
Oh yeah, we're always looking for some kind of liquidity. Yeah, you have to have liquidity. Otherwise you're not gonna get any, you're not gonna have a trade. There's not gonna be enough liquidity and enough just distribution if we don't have orders. So waiting for one of those zones to sweep. Like for example, I was going over the trade that we took. Uh, this is the trade that we took on Thursday. You see how we were in between? Like, okay, so this is the open here, right? And it's super choppy. And this market is wedged in between Asia high, London loan, Asia low. We're not looking to take trades in here. This is where amateurs get chopped up. Seeking destroy price action. We're waiting for a lower liquidity or higher liquidity to get tagged and then look for a model. Okay. So this, that's exactly what you need to be waiting for because that's when true moves actually happen. And then here comes the, the manipulation and then our trade setup presents itself after taking full Asia low and London low. So yeah, you're gonna be a lot safer after liquidity gets swept.
Okay, makes sense.
Yep.
Awesome. Well, like I said, I keep it short, appreciate it and appreciate everything you're doing for us.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Chat, a very important thing is liquidity, man. If you don't have liquidity in our trade models, it's, it's really just never going to work. You, you need liquidity to be swept before you get into a model. Like right here, nothing's getting swept and you're probably thinking, oh, like I'm gonna take like an inverse here, like an inverse, inverse short, but you're, you're really, this actually ends up working for you. But the real move is this delivery, you know? So this is kind of like the manipulation leg and then distribution happens here. Who do we got next, Gaines? Why didn't you get inside that first manipulation? Because I'm not an amateur. I don't even understand that question. Why would I want to be in the manipulation, bro? We don't trade manipulation. This right here is just seeking to destroy price action. Uh, we got Nick Trades in the house.
Yo PJ, what's up?
Nick Trades, what is that? A Mustang? What, what kind of car is that? Oh, nice. Nice, bro.
Um, so I have, I have two questions. Um, the first one is like when you're trading a reversal, how do you know, like sometimes you put your stop loss, um, just a little bit above or below the inverse and then sometimes you place it, like you give more room at the swing higher swing low. So how do you know?
This question, this question is like impossible to answer. This comes up so many times because every single trade setup is different. So every single trade stuff, I need to see where things, certain things are in situations in order to place safe stops. So sometimes there's gonna be an inverted for value gap. That's a five-minute inverted for value gap and it might have some kind of sell-side imbalance there that I need the market possibly could dig into. So it's such a hard question to answer. So this, you could run stops below the swing low here. Okay, you totally can. Right? This is gonna be a safe spot at the swing low, 37 point stop. Okay. But in my opinion, in my experience, if you get an inverse here, which is the first presented on this leg and you're flipping back below this here, we're in trouble. Why? I do not want to have a 37 point stop here. Basically what I'm looking for on this stop is this one minute buy side and efficiency being the last line of defense for us. We flipped an inverse. Yeah, we might be able to touch this, but if we flip this now, we're in trouble. So every single trade setup is gonna be just, I, there's no way, there's no one set and forget it at stop loss, right? Everything is gonna be different. So it's really a tough one for me to answer because every setup just has a, a different, a different build to it.
Okay. Um, so that just kind of comes with experience, I guess, trying to determine.
Yeah, that, that just comes with trade, trade time, chart time and what the trade setup is giving us. You know?
Okay.
Like in this example, I'm trying to say like, if we flipped this inverse here on this manipulation leg, right? We would not want to see price come and flip this. So us running this stop here is just us wasting an additional 22 points of stop out. Doesn't make any sense. We're wrong if we flip below this gap now.
Okay.
So every trade is different.
Alright, um, and then I have one more question.
One second, one second. And the reason that I don't wanna, somebody said, just put it on a swing low or high. Song Hongdo. I just explained the reason why you don't want to do that though. Because the way we trade, we know when we're right and we know when we're wrong really fast. So if we're putting this stop at the swing low, right? And like I just mentioned, if this flips here on the inverse on this first presented and then flips this gap inverse, why am I wasting an additional 21 points of stop out? You understand what I'm saying? Just because I reduce size, still doesn't make any sense from the way we trade. It wouldn't make any sense then to take an additional 21. Go ahead, Nick.
Okay. And then also I think it was the Thursday trade where you cut the first one, basically break even after you, you kind of knew it was gonna manipulate again. How do you?
This is the same.
How do you kind of figure that out in real time? Like sometimes price will manipulate again, sometimes it won't.
Um, in real time. So from my experience, the thing that you need to be looking at is multiple timeframes as the trades playing out. But a lot of the times you're gonna see like, the market needs to actually close candle close below the lows. Right? So the, in this case here, this doesn't actually close below the, the Asia load. You see it? You see how the body candles close above it? Looks like a sweep and sometimes it does work. But the clue on this trade was the two-minute never went inverse after the one-minute went inverse. And then you get a 30-second inverse to the downside. That's just your cue to cut the trade. It's gonna manipulate one more time. This is just real-time price action reading, happens in real time. And there's no way to know unless you're watching it in real time. You have, you know, again, chart hours and experience on this, but a lot of the time I like to see a candle closure below the low. Like boom, now you get a V shape because now you have a ton of orders that just got snabbed. Okay. This is now the manipulation leg and then you get the V shape from there. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a real, it's just real-time price action reading in, in the middle of this. Like you get this, you get this one-minute inverse, but the two-minute fails and then the 30-second ends up getting inverse to the downside. So it's not a good sign.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. This, this discord's been great. This is the first one I've actually paid for and I definitely don't regret it at all. So. Anyone who hasn't joined yet, join up.
I appreciate it, brother. Thank you. Alright, we're going on an hour and 15 minutes so far, chat. So yeah, chat, this is a, a very common question, man. It's like, where do you place your stop losses? Every single trade is different. Every single trade is different. Every single area of stop loss is gonna be different. There's no one-all be-all to that one. And reading a manipulation leg is just, it's gonna come in hours and hours of practice, man. Like a lot of people got stabbed in this right here. Uh, we were in, we were actually in it and then we took a one-point stop and then we got back in after the manipulation leg and took the, the true trade. Do you always wait for retests of inverted for value gaps? Not always, man. Sometimes it's just you could take it on the straight break and you could just, you set your stop loss. Yo, could we get this guy Sitto in here? He asked to be in for a while now. Bring him in. There we go. What's up, brother? Sitto?
Sitoa.
Sitoa, what's up, brother?
Yes, sir. Yes. Sorry for, for spamming earlier, man.
Nah, you're good. You're good. You're good.
Alright, so I have like two questions. Just, just gonna make it quick.
Yes, sir.
So the first question, so you'd mentioned earlier on this trade on the screen right now that you prefer to wait for a candle close to confirm the manipulation. Is that just a preference or? I guess, yeah, yeah. Why is the, just the week not enough for the manipulation?
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you say, can you say your question again? I was typing something in the YouTube.
Yeah, for sure. So, um, on the trade on the screen right now, so we first swept Asia low, but the bodies didn't close below the Asia low.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is why do you necessarily want the body to close to confirm the manipulation?
Uh, the body is closing below, uh, the low usually signify that there, the orders flushed below there. So I like to see it actually close below and then get a V shape property from there. Uh, it's just, it's just the way that the market responds quicker. So a lot of times if you see like a WIC manipulation, because you have to think about it like this, right? Price is where the bodies close, not where the WICs close, right? WICs went there. Bodies didn't close there, correct? So this actually closes above the Asia low. Now you get body candles below the Asia low. So price is closing below. Price never closed below here. Right? It just wick into it. And that's usually not enough on a manipulation. You usually want to see a WIC, you usually want to see, excuse me, bodies candles below, then the V shape, then the inverse, and then that's when you're taking the trade setup.
I got you. That makes sense. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Alright, so the last question. So on the other trade on September 2nd, where we had the continuation model.
Yep.
So on the five-minute, there's like two five-minute bearish value gaps, but then you entered after we retested the, the first one down. You didn't wait for the other one to get tapped.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at it now. You're asking about which five-minute gap, the one above it where the change in the state happens?
Exactly. Yeah. So personally, so a lot of times I've waited for the one above to get tapped and I missed the trade completely. So that's, that's, I guess my question is, when do you know if you can just take the one above or you gotta wait for the one on top to get tapped as well?
Well, in this situation, it's kind of a lot to ask for a five-minute inverse, a 15-minute inverse, and then you're asking for the five-minute first presented CIBI that created that to also get tapped? So it's like a lot to really say, hey, like I want price to come all the way back up into here and then look for the short. Uh, in this situation, again, this all comes down to just kind of feel like you've already got five-minute and 15-minute inverse. You then just wicked into both of them at the same time. And if you're looking at the straight then on like the one minute, right? Or the third, even the 30-second dropping down, you could pretty much see how nasty of a revert. Like that's a nice V shape out of that zone. Okay. So we're, if you're watching this in real time, you're probably saying yourself, we're not going back up here now. That's not gonna fill. There's no way this fills at this point. Cause we're building up LRR to the downside. Okay. We have a nice draw. And now we're filling the 15, the five-minute at the same time. I would be hard pressed to say that this is gonna then come up and fill all the way up into that, that first five-minute gap. So again, this is just price action reading. Whenever I'm getting into a trade for, to clarify for people, we're not setting limit orders by any means. I never set limit, limits. I'm marketing into trades based on reactions out of zones. So you have to be doing the same thing. If you're watching this trade and you see this really nice reaction here, right? This should pretty much be telling you, hey, like this short is, this is good. We're good to go here. We filled the five-minute CIBI. We filled the 15-minute and the five-minute inverses and now we're wicking really nasty out of that zone. We're in the trade.
I got you.
Yeah, this is just feel, man. Trading comes down, a lot of it comes down to feel. And a lot of comes, that comes down to just getting more chart hours and seeing the reactions out of certain areas. So we're never limit ordering, ordering in. It's just let me wait for reaction. If that reaction looks good, we're entering the trade and setting our risk.
I got you, bro. I got you. I'm about to join your premium Discord right away. I'm gonna be in there on Monday. You'll see me.
Alright, brother. We're glad to have you in there, man. Thank you so much for coming on.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
See you, buddy. Oh, we got some good questions being asked, bro. That guy had a really deep voice. I actually loved it, man. It was like, I think you can read like, uh, he could read like a, a going to sleep, like a book or something. I'd fall asleep instantly. I love it, bro. I love it. I love it. We gotta get him on like the comm app or something. I'm the captain now. Can be a high timeframe sleep like a four-hour tapping inside. I don't know what that means, Matthew. I can't understand that, that language. Can be a high, is that Vin Diesel? Bro said somebody would have, would have been a deeper voice than PJ. That's funny. Alright, we got, uh, who's coming on next?
Hello?
Hey, what's up? What's up? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Gaines, can you delete this guy BRX's thing in the chat? BRX, we, we don't do that, bro. You can't. That's a loophole. You're not allowed to do that. Sorry, one second.
That's okay.
People think that they can, uh, join the premium and then pump their affiliate codes. I'm like, bro, that's like, that makes zero sense. Alright, nurse, talk to me. What do we got going on?
I just had a really quick question for like, do you have any advice for the people that work full-time? So like I joined premium last week and I usually have Thursdays off, so I was able to like, listen in and I'm able to listen in a lot of the times, but sometimes I'm like scared to get into a trade because I can't quite manage it when I'm like in between procedures and stuff.
Yeah. No, I totally get it. Yeah. Honestly, I don't have advice because I don't, I, I, I think it's very difficult to do what we do while you're actually managing something else because there's so much going on on the chart. And there's so many times where like, example, the trade we took the other day where that trade had to be cut immediately. Like, so I can only imagine like getting into a trade and then having to manage like patience and so I, I don't, yeah, that's a tough one.
Yeah, it was hard this week because I missed both Tuesday and Thursday.
Those are the two biggest trades of the week. Yeah. It's, it's, yeah, no, I really don't, I've, I'll be honest with you. I've never traded and had a job on the side, so I don't have good advice for that one. Um, I really think that everyone's kind of gotta be like pretty focused on what's going on because so many things change in the futures market so fast. Especially the way that we trade, like we're in and out of the market pretty quickly. So, yeah, I don't have any advice. I mean, the advice I have given people in the past is trade another session, but then again, these models, in my opinion, trade better during the New York session. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, you get more volatility in the morning and the AM. Uh, that's where you're gonna get the best deliveries. Like some people trade Asia and they do well, but it's just not for me. It's so slow. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you, you have days off during the week?
I, yeah, I usually have Thursdays off. So, which was, I actually joined premium last week and I was, my first live was on Thursday and that was the day that you gave away the buy funded futures. And I was one of those people. So it was my very first like.
Oh, no way.
So if anybody's on the fence about joining premium, that.
That's crazy.
That right there tells you, I was like, this is a sign.
That's so crazy. That's awesome. How long, how long have you been trading? You just start?
I, no, not really. Like, uh, it's probably been about five years when I went through a divorce and I was like, you know what? I'm gonna try to focus on this and, uh, but it's, it's a struggle. I mean, it's a journey.
Yeah, for sure. Especially if you're working, you said you're an RN, a nurse?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm a surgical nurse. So it's like in between surgeries. I'm like looking and I'm like listening as well, but like when I'm in my surgery, like I'm focused on that.
Oh, of course. Of course.
When I got out, I couldn't believe it. When I got out on Tuesday and I heard the music and I was like, no, I just missed that.
Oh my goodness. Well, have you met Athena yet? Cause she's a nurse in our chat as well.
I have not. No, I, I was just kind of listening in on Thursday and I heard her talking a little bit. I was like, ah, but then I had to go back into surgery. So.
Oh my goodness. That's so, yeah. Yeah, no, that's tough, especially when you're managing like life or death like that. So.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, I didn't know, but.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for being a premium member and thank you for coming on.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Liz versus Athena, who could take the best trade during surgery? No, bro, no, that's crazy. That is crazy talk. JRW, JRW's up next. Um, let me go. So I, I, we did not trade Friday chat, but there was like so many trading opportunities that day. JRW.
What's good, man?
Mr. SpongeBob himself. What's going on?
Yeah, not bad, man. Um, so I had a couple of questions. My first one was about how often you expect to trade during the week? Cause obviously something I've noticed on the live streams is that you multiple, like your PJ reads multiple setups every day. And obviously you won't take them all, but how often should you be expecting to take a setup? Would you take one every day if it's available or would you just cut the week short, preserve mental capital? How would you approach that?
Um, that really depends on where I'm at for the week. Uh, you know, if you're, if you're entering into like, for example, Friday was NFP and notoriously NFP is just pretty volatile, pretty dangerous to trade. And I'm entering into the week 200 points up. You know, why am I trading? Like what, what benefit am I gonna get out of that? What if I have a horrible day? And I chalk all my, my gainings or my earnings from the, from that week. So a lot of this comes up, it comes, it doesn't come down to what's PJ doing? It comes down to what's JRW need to do for his business? What makes the most sense for him? You know, it's. You know, it's, this is the stuff that I'm doing, it should really be like mimicked because that's the way you should be trading. That's the way you should be managing business. But you know, not every day is going to be a trading day. Like there is, there was setups on Friday. I sat there and we tape read them with the chat and didn't trade them because I'm not willing to risk. And I know notoriously in my past, Fridays have been not my best trading days. Statistically in my journal, it's like Fridays are not the greatest, especially on an NFP day. So you know, you gotta have, you gotta have that data, you know, for your own business and know when to push it, when not to push it. Especially going into a Friday up 200 points, man. I'm not willing to come into that day and, and then, you know, and trade. Because the more you engage with the market, man, at some point, it's going to come to bite you. You might take a full stop out and I'm just not willing to do that.
Okay, um, well, this kind of comes into the second question as well. So something, I only joined this discord two or three weeks ago. And I've been trading for two years, so it's been a long journey, but something I struggled with, I was doing really good with the system. And then as soon as I joined your discord, I found myself just like literally copying your trades, using you as a signal about essentially. And I hated that. So how can I go about, or for anyone else going through that type of thing where I just, because essentially I want to use you as guidance to become an independent trader and not just copy it. Obviously I'm here to become a better trader, learn and then I'm able to go off on my own and make money. How would I decipher, you know, essentially not just copying you? And as soon as you click buy, everything goes out the window and I click buy too, rather than my own conviction.
Well, I mean, you should be looking at each, each trade setup for your own, for your own confluence, right? You should be using me as maybe extra, extra confirmation that you're seeing this, you're seeing it correctly. You know, and if you think that you're ready to go out on your own, then maybe leave the discord and go, and go trade for yourself and see, you know, see if you're, you're ready. You know, we've had people do that too. And then they immediately come back a month later like, dude, I'm not ready yet. Like this is, I still need to watch this and learn this and study exactly the trade setups that you're doing for longer. In reality, you're not going to be able to get trade, like understand pattern recognition trading in one month or two months or three months. In reality, this is going to take a long time to really get down. So test the waters by yourself and then come back if it doesn't work. But I would just be using what I'm doing in real time as confirmation for your own trade ideas. You should be already reading this stuff in real time, right? And if you're not there yet, then obviously you need to get, you need more work. You're not ready yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the issue I had been having was that I, I was doing all of that. I was, I was doing my own pre market analysis. I'd mark out stuff I might have missed out that you saw. And then I would be looking for trades. I mean, for example, that continuation model you posted, I actually saw a reaction at the top of the move that validated a trade for me. Now I didn't take it because you were looking for longs at the time and I trusted your experience over mine. But obviously that trade ended up playing out and was a really good trade way before the continuation model even formed. So it, it was sort of like, I read price and I do that. And then as soon as I see you on, on the screen and you're going, right, I'm going to enter here. It's like everything else just went out the window.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you want me to answer that one. Again, you, you've got to make your own decision, man. You're your own independent thinker. You know, you shouldn't be listening to, to 100% what I'm doing. If you see something, then you have to trade it. You know?
Yeah, no, that's fair enough.
Yeah. But I think the, the, the reason that you're here is you're learning the models. So you eventually could take it on your own and do it on your own. And I think that's what everyone's, you know, goal is. And obviously there's people that don't really care about that, which whatever, it's fine, but it takes time, man. It takes time. How long you been trading?
But two, over two years now.
Are you profitable yet or no?
I've been break even for probably the last six months.
Okay, so you're close, you're close.
Yeah, and I just passed my first top step yesterday.
Okay, yeah, man. I mean, just gotta keep grinding, bro. It's a process. You gotta fall in love with the process in between though. You gotta fall in love with bettering yourself, you gotta fall in love with bettering your, your skillset, your mindset. Everything is literally a part of your business. So what you're doing outside of the charts is going to reflect on the charts. And that break even stage is a good sign that you're getting closer and closer to being profitable, so. Yeah, man.
Yeah, no, 100% appreciate that.
We'll see, uh, we'll see what happens, brother. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll keep monitoring your progress.
Yeah, no worries.
Oh, man. All right, guys, well, I think, I think we're going to call it there unless we want to get Gaines on for a little bit of book map stuff. Do we want to get Gaines on for some book map questions? I don't know if he's able to come on, he's in the, he's in the discord. Probably get him on if he wants to. Do you guys want some book map questions? We have any book map questions or should we call it there? Uh, what kind of entry are you looking for on a retest of a gap? Another inverse or just strong price action here? What kind of entry are you looking for on a retest of a gap? On a retest of a gap, I'm just looking for continuation, really. I'm looking for rejection from a continuation of the gap. So like this gap right here. This gap right here gets respected and then just flushes because we're trending lower. Doesn't inverse, right? Holds it. And then continues lower from here. All right, guys, yeah, I'm going to call it here. I don't think we got any, uh, I don't think we got any questions, so. Maybe next time we can get him on here, but it's already been like an hour and 40 into the stream, so. I'm going to call it here. I'm tired, well, I'm not tired, I'm ready to go to the gym. I've been sitting down too long. All right, guys, everyone have a great Saturday, man. It was a, it was a fun, a fun little Saturday session. We got a lot of Q and A in which I'm excited about. We'll chop up the video, put it out for, uh, some of the month of mentorship stuff, so. You got some good questions and as always, I appreciate you guys tuning into the stream, so. Have a great, uh, Saturday, man. Have a great Saturday, do something good for yourself today, right? Don't just sit around doing nothing. All right, have a blessed one. We'll see you guys next week. Peace.